... President-elect, United States of America, in the duty of our republic which stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, October 16, 2018. The time is now 7:49. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Tuji.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Communications.
Good Shepherd Academy has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold an on-premise merchandise raffle on Sunday, November 18, 2018, at 2:00 p.m. at their address on 24 Brookline Avenue in Nutley. Any motion?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tuji.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
It's my distinct pleasure, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, to congratulate Mr. Barry Cazira, who is in our audience tonight, on becoming the 2018 Essex County Lawyer of the Year, and we're going to read a proclamation on his behalf, and we'll take some comments from the Commissioners, and then we'll take a picture. Whereas Barry A. Cazira Esquire was born on April 18, 1953, and is a longtime resident of the township of Nutley, and whereas Barry A. Cazira is a graduate of South River High School in South River, New Jersey, the University of Chicago BA with honors in the college and in American history, 1975, Ed Rutgers Law School, NORC JD, 1978, and whereas Mr. Cazira is married to Cheryl Paduto Cazira, and have raised two successful daughters, Jillian and Alexandra, and whereas Barry A. Cazira is a founding member in the law firm of Cazira &amp; Harts, and has admitted to the bars in New Jersey, New York, Eastern District of New York, Southern District of New York, the Second, Third, and Ninth Circuit Courts of Appeal, and the United States Supreme Court, and whereas Mr. Cazira is a member of the Bar Association, the New Jersey State Bar Association, and the Essex County Bar Association, Chairman of the Criminal Law Section from 1988 to 1989, and whereas Mr. Cazira previously served as a member of the Township of Nutley Planning Board, and currently serves as the Attorney for the Township of Nutley Planning Board, is a mediator for the New Jersey State Chancery and Law Divisions of the Superior Court, discovery master, statutory receiver, and special fiscal agent on the New Jersey State Superior Court Chancery Division, federal arbitrator, United States District Court of New Jersey, federal mediator, United States District Court of New Jersey, panelist in the Essex County Family and Chancery early settlement programs, an Essex County contract arbitrator, and an Essex County condemnation commissioner, and whereas Mr. Cazira also serves as a trustee on the Board of Trustees of the Legal Services Corporation of New Jersey, former chairman of the St. Clair Church Finance Committee, president and founder of the Philomena Coppola Memorial Scholarship Fund, and former chancellor of the Nutley Historical Society, and whereas Mr. Cazira was named as a 2005 and 2006 Super Lawyer in the Super Lawyer Magazine, and a 2012 New Jersey Top Grade Lawyers for Administrative Law, Civil, Trusts, and Estates, and whereas Mr. Cazira is a recipient of the New Jersey State Bar Association's Service to the Bar Award, the Essex County Bar Association's General Practice Achievement Award, the 2018 Elk Citizen of the Year Award, and the 2018 Essex County Bar Association Professional Lawyer of the Year Award for his exemplary conduct, competence, diligence, demeanor, and for setting a positive example for others, whereas it was great pleasure that the Township of Nutley pay tributes to the overwhelming accomplishments of Mr. Barry A. Cazira, and for his steadfast resolve to succeed in life. Now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State, New Jersey, and that the Township commend Barry Cazira for his distinguished contributions and accomplishments, and be further resolved that the Township of Nutley extend its sincere congratulations to Barry A. Cazira for being selected to receive the 2018 Elk Citizen of the Year Award, and the 2018 Professional Lawyer of the Year Award. Mr. Cazira, congratulations. As our longtime Planning Board Attorney, we appreciate the hard work you put in on behalf of the Township of Nutley. It's a lot of work and effort, and we don't always get compensated the way we should for all that hard work and effort, but I'm sure it's a labor of love.
Commissioners? Mr. Evans?
Barry, you know, I thought about this once I heard about it, and my first reaction was a very heartfelt, hearty congratulations. I can't think of many people that you never hear about getting any recognition, but who deserve to get much more than they actually get. Your thoughtfulness, your caringness, caring to the town, your devotion, as well as the legal prowess that you bring to the table, is very much appreciated, and I know by me, and I'm sure the Board has always been well-recognized. Thank you.
Commissioner Tuji?
Yes. Barry, this is a tremendous honor, and it's very well-deserved, not only for what you do for us here in Nutley, but what you do throughout the county, throughout the state, and everything else that you get involved in. I'm really at a loss for words to tell you how honored I am to be part of this, all right, and giving you this proclamation, because it's not often that we hear very nice things about attorneys. So, having you recognized like this, and having you as one of our own, is something that I personally will never forget. Congratulations.
Commissioner Patraco?
Thank you. You know, Barry, the one thing I always admire about yourself and anybody, when you start from humble beginnings, and to wind up in the seat that you're in, and the award that you're receiving, is, you know, to me means everything. You know, when you're born on third base, and you get there, so to speak, not the same as when, you know, you're swinging from home plate. Just to mirror Moro's words a little bit, you know, my respect for attorneys have definitely grown the last couple of years now that my son is in law school. So, alls I could say is I sure hope that you paid your parents back for all your student loans, and I hope to receive some of my money back from my son. We'll see how that goes. But all kidding around, Barry, you know, as the Mayor, I worked with you on the Planning Board, a true professional all the time, and, you know, our relationship, you know, I really thank you for always supporting me as well, so congratulations again.
Commissioner Rogers?
Barry, well deserved, and I congratulate you and your lovely wife, who's sitting there, who's been on this journey with you. I know full well that it is a very difficult task that you have accomplished, and you couldn't do it without your wife. And in addition to that, just reiterating what my colleague said, I know you work hard. I know you work long hours. Have gotten some of your emails on Saturdays, Sundays, night and day. You're a truly dedicated servant, and I thank you so much, and I wish you God's blessings.
Mr. Cazira, will you take a picture with us?
Sure. Cheryl, come on up.
They never want to give me the mic, that's for sure. Anyway, I want to thank the Mayor and the Commissioners for this great honor, this privilege. As my wife knows, wouldn't be here without family support, that's for sure. I was talking to my brother-in-law yesterday, and he heard about this award, and he said, "It's funny you get a award for being Professional of the Year, isn't that what you're supposed to be?" "The lawyer, that's what you're supposed to be." And he said, "It's kind of sad that you're getting the award for being what you're supposed to be." And he said, "It says something about the other folks out there." But I, you know, those of you who know me know I work hard, and my word is my bond. If I tell you I'm going to do something, I try to do it. I'm not going to be able to do it if I call you up and send you one of those emails 24/7 saying I'm not going to be able to do it. I do fight hard, and I'm opinionated, as we all know. I have to say, Nutley's my adopted community, and I sincerely pray for your fix this shot and my brothers, who are wonderful kids and have been supportive of me all along. So, I do thank you for this award, and for those of you who need more of me, I'll be here tomorrow night for the Planning Board meeting, and Thursday night for another Planning Board meeting, so be, you're welcome to come and see me and actually I'll be happy to come. But thank you very much, this is a great honor for me.
Congratulations, Mr. Cazira. Let's go to reports. Commissioner Patraco?
We have our Department of Public Safety report this month.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, code enforcement reports for the month of September, and for the third quarter 2018.
At this point, I'm going to bring up Mr. Inglisino to give us an update on COA and the redevelopment at the former Roche site.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, and the public as well, I apologize for my back. The progress on the former Roche, now prison redevelopment site, and Nutley's affordable housing settlement are linked. The Mayor first asked me to provide an update on the progress of the redevelopment of the Roche site, and then to discuss the affordable housing settlement. Roche announced it was going to close down back then, I think, 2013 or sometime. We were hired shortly thereafter to serve as redevelopment council, and the Commissioners at that point were presented with an enormous challenge, and the challenge was, you know, how to reconstitute this site so that it could make Nutley a better town. The underlying zoning on that site was industrial, so you could have had a large industrial site on that project. A large affordable housing operation for Nutley was looming in the distance, so you could have had an enormous multifamily housing project on that site, and God knows what else. But the Commissioners decided that Nutley's future in large part was inextricably linked to the future of this site, and so they decided to take matters into their own hands, and working together with your profession and with your community, set this site on a course that would help shape Nutley's future. And so in March of 2014, the Commissioners authorized a blight study for most of the Roche site on a condemnation basis, and this was important, because by retaining the power of eminent domain, you retain the ability to control the destiny and future of this site. Knowing that that may have sparked, as it did, some adversarialness with Roche at the time, the Commissioners felt very strongly that the future of this property should be and remain in control of Nutley. On March 3 of 2015, the Commissioners declared the site as a condemnation area for needed redevelopment, and in April 2015, Roche filed a lawsuit challenging Nutley's blight declaration, but I will say that although they filed the lawsuit, as you all know, the lawsuit was never really litigated. It was held in the balance pending the outcome of the sale to prison, whereupon it was dismissed. In 2016, the summer of 2016, the Commissioners adopted a redevelopment plan for the medical school site on approximately 10.9 acres of the site, and the site, of course, is a little over 100 acres in total between Nutley and Clifton, with about 52 or so acres in Nutley and about the same in Clifton, so about, almost 11 acres of the site was for the medical school. And this was important, because, you know, Roche came to the table and expressed a willingness to work with the Board of Commissioners, participated in the visioning process, which you may recall resulted first in the Perkins Eastern Study that called them the best scenario, and to my recollection, it takes something like 15 years to potentially build it out. There were a number of different scenarios potentially for the site, but the idea of a medical school for the site was something that began to be discussed and took hold, and was something that the Commissioners embraced, and the community embraced, as something that would be good for the site, because it would create the opportunity to realize a vision for the site of life sciences and development that would be related to that, that would help you not only replace a tax ratable, but would really elevate, and again, shape, help shape, the future for Nutley. Between August and September of 2016, Nutley entered into a series of agreements and passed a series of resolutions with the medical school, which again is a joint venture, as we all know, between Hackensack and Seaton Hall, which resulted in this, which was the first private medical school in New Jersey, a nonprofit at that, resulted in them agreeing to pay Nutley the equivalent of full taxation on the site. That was an extraordinary accomplishment. Here you have a nonprofit medical school, by utilizing the redevelopment tools at your disposal, were able to get a concrete agreement, a series of agreements, that results in this medical school paying full taxation on the site. We also know that in September of 2016, that Prism acquired the property from Roche. We've been engaged in the planning process for the rest of the site. In August of this year, the Commissioners approved a redevelopment plan for what we refer to as Phase 2A of the site, Phase 2A, and that is a plan basically for the remaining buildings on the site, other than the medical school. As we all know, Roche had taken down a bunch of buildings, there were a few buildings remaining, and the redevelopment plan pertains to those sites. Building 1, which is now known as 100th Metro Boulevard, this building is a 15-story, about 255 or so thousand-square-foot building, which has been leased by Ralph LaRend, which has been announced. The redevelopment plan for Phase 2A also pertains to Building 76, which is now known as 200th Metro Boulevard, which is the other large 15-story building, which is a little over 300,000 square feet. Building 102, which is the Modern Meadow Building, now known as 111th Ideation Way, which is a six-story building consisting of about 154,000 square feet. So the plan provides for various uses for these buildings to help facilitate, you know, tenants to go into these buildings and occupying those buildings, so that the site can realize its potential. That redevelopment plan also created the opportunity for subdivisions, and also designated Prism as the redeveloper, and resulted in the approval of a parking garage, but that parking garage will be used exclusively for 100 and 200th Metro Boulevard. And those actions, of course, were taken by the Planning Board, and the leadership of the Planning Board Attorney, Mr. Cazira, and those members on the Board. Currently, we're in the process of negotiating a redevelopment agreement for Phase 2A, that's ongoing, in the process of considering Prism's tax abatement request for Phase 2A, and currently planning for the future development of the balance of the Roche, now prison, site. Some of the issues that are being considered are various uses, making sure that those uses are linked to and consistent with the vision for the site just outlined. The densing, how dense is going, the site going to be? Bulk standards for buildings that will be built on the site. The effects of Clifton redevelopment on the site. The Clifton site was not occupied in large part prior to now with buildings, and there's a redevelopment effort going on there. How are those buildings, how is that redevelopment going to impact Nutley in various ways? All efforts, all issues under consideration. Traffic, first, there's internal circulation on the site, making sure that that works. There's off-site traffic considerations that have to be thoroughly reviewed, and undoubtedly result in major traffic improvements that Nutley will likely require the redeveloper to perform. Economic impacts on the site, this is a very significant property in terms of the tax ratables that Nutley collects, and making sure that those ratables get back hopefully to once where they were, or as close to that as possible, and understanding the impacts on services. So that all the Commissioners, I know that as these concepts and plans fully develop, will be reflecting on what impacts those plans might have on their departments, so that Nutley can be compensated for services. There's infrastructure impacts on your water, your sewer, there's things that Nutley's trying to get from the community benefit from this project, I'm sure, the interconnected system, water pressure and fire suppression issues. There is connectivity to Nutley's business district, and utilizing this redevelopment process as a way to help foster improvements that will benefit Nutley's business district by creating connectivity that today does not exist. And also affordable housing, and how this site could help satisfy Nutley's affordable housing obligations. These impacts are important, because this site is transforming from a closed-off, owner-occupied campus to a multi-tenanted, potentially multi-owned campus that will not be gated off or closed off to the public, that will include the public. And so these are all of the issues that are being carefully and thoughtfully considered and deliberated, so that decisions that are made going forward are ones that will be in Nutley's best interest. Which leads me to a summary of the settlement agreement that is on your agenda for consideration tonight. This settlement, if approved, will resolve Nutley's affordable housing obligation for the third round. There have been roughly, there's roughly 300, I think in excess of 300 of these cases that have been pending around the state, and over 230 of them have been settled. So by settling this case, you're certainly following suit with many of the municipalities in this state who have been through this Mount Royal litigation process. But first, a little bit of context, so that the public understands what we're talking about by Mount Royal, the Mount Royal doctrine, and affordable housing. There's a little bit of the history here, and I'll go through it as quickly as I can, but I do think it's important for folks to have some understanding of the history and context, so that they can appreciate the action that's being taken tonight. Back in the early 1970s, there was a lawsuit. The Southern Burlington County NAACP challenged the zoning ordinance of Mount Royal Township on the grounds that it excluded low and moderate-income persons from obtaining housing. The idea was that towns could zone out people with lesser means and prevent them from living in those municipalities. And in this settlement decision, the New Jersey State Supreme Court held that the state constitution required that each municipality plan and provide, by its land use regulations, the reasonable opportunity for appropriate variety and choice of housing, including low and moderate-income housing, to meet the needs, desires, and resources of all categories of people who may desire to live in these quarters. In order to satisfy this obligation, the court held that all municipalities, developing municipalities, must affirmatively provide a realistic opportunity for the construction of their fair share of the regional need of low and moderate-income housing. That is a constitutional requirement that has been imposed on municipalities across the state like Nutley since 1975. Now, despite this ruling that came down from the New Jersey State Supreme Court, many municipalities didn't do anything, and the legislature didn't do anything legislatively by not following laws to implement the Supreme Court's decision. So in 1983, there was a case that came down, it's known as Mount Royal 2, which introduces the builder's remedy. So in 1983, the Supreme Court upheld and affirmed this rule in Mount Royal 1, and created a mechanism to enforce its mandate called the builder's remedy. The builder's remedy entitles the developer to a court-ordered zoning designation, including density, setbacks, building heights, lot coverage, green area, et cetera. And the developer is, despite your zoning, what it means is the court can order multifamily housing and affordable housing in any zone in the town, irrespective of how the town seeks to zone this property. If it succeeds in the Mount Royal litigation, given that the developer can show that the town has not satisfied its fair share requirement established in Mount Royal 1, and if it proposes a project with a substantial amount of affordable housing, which has meant 15% for rentals and 20% for for-sale projects, of the total proposed units must be affordable to low and moderate-income housing. And there was also a requirement that the property be suitable for multifamily housing development. And this was significant, because in New Jersey, we're considered a homeless state, zoning and planning is something that is done at the local level, but if the town is not compliant with its Mount Royal requirement, then a developer can come in, in any zone, sue, and get a large-scale multifamily housing imposed on the town, so long as there's 15 or 20% of the housing set aside for low and moderate-income housing. So what this means basically, if one out of five units, if one out of five units is affordable, the builder in many places will be able to proceed with his project, again irrespective of zoning. Well, Mount Royal 2 sort of got everybody's attention. In response to that, in 1985, the New Jersey Legislature acted and passed what is called the Fair Housing Act. That act did a couple of things. Number one, it codified the Mount Royal doctrine. Number two, it established the Council on Affordable Housing Notice, COA. We always hear that acronym, COA. What does it mean? It means Council on Affordable Housing, and that is a state agency that was created under the Fair Housing Act in 1985. The act also provides municipalities with voluntary administrative processes through which they can satisfy their Mount Royal obligations in lieu of litigating exclusionary zoning lawsuits. So rather than waiting for a developer to come and sue you with a COVID-19 lawsuit, the establishment of COA provided a voluntary mechanism whereby you could go to the state, you could go to COA with an affordable housing plan, and get that plan approved, or you could file a declaratory judgment action. So municipalities, again, could elect to participate in COA's administrative process by adopting and filing housing element fair share plan that addressed both what we refer to as present and prospective housing needs. Now, any town that did file a housing element fair share plan with COA could thereafter petition COA for something called substantive certification, which meant that basically COA approved your plan for a particular period of time, which is known as ramp. So what you have here is you have the developers who sort of have been sued of the developer's builder's remedy lawsuits, and municipalities were then given the shield of an administrative process whereby they could have their housing plan approved and be immune from builder's remedy. That's how it basically works. And once you have this grant, you have substantive certification. And once you have this grant, you have the substantive certification to your plan, your land use ordinances were rendered presumptively valid for a period of 10 years. Now, the concept here was that COA granted these rounds. The concept was that COA would say to the municipality, here, town, is your obligation for the first round. And the first round was actually 1987 to 1993, and the second round was from 1993 until 1999. So COA would say, here's your obligation, you, town, have an obligation to, or you could submit a plan that showed how you were going to fulfill that obligation through the zoning process. If the units weren't built, it wasn't your fault. All you could do as a town is provide the zoning, provide the ability for those units to be built. Now, this was not a very popular process. Municipalities and the public did not like the fact that unwanted, court-mandated multifamily housing projects were being imposed on municipalities. But frankly, back then, the obligations, which were always significant, were not overwhelmingly significant, but they were unpopular nonetheless. Now, the second round was expiring in 1999. And for those of us who were around back then, we knew what happened in 1999 and then 2000. George W. Bush got elected President of the United States. Governor Chris Whitman resigned as governor and went to become a member of George Bush's cabinet. Don Di Francesco became the acting governor, and then in 2001, Jim McGreevy, who was former Mayor of Woodbridge, was elected governor. So guess what didn't happen during that period of time? Third-round rules were never adopted by COA, and that was left to Governor McGreevy. Now, Governor McGreevy was Mayor of Woodbridge, which is a large suburban municipality, and he understood that this concept of imposing court-mandated housing on towns was not well received. But he had an obligation as governor to come up with a new set of rules. So he came up with a new concept called growth share. The concept of growth share was, rather than the state imposing a number on the towns, instead, you would owe if you grew. The more you grow, the more you owe. That was the concept. So if you permitted commercial space to be built in your town, and for X number of square footages of commercial space, you had to provide Y number of affordable housing units. That was the concept, so that it wasn't as offensive to towns and the public. These rules were challenged by Fair Share Housing Center, by the builders groups, by number groups, and it was litigation that lasted from 1999, which really didn't get fully resolved until 2015. So guess what didn't happen during that period of time? Rules were never passed, obligations were never set before municipalities, and nothing much happened. On March 15th of 2015, the New Jersey State Supreme Court found that COA's administrative process had failed, and that COA was the, quote, "more of an agency." That's what the New Jersey State Supreme Court said about COA. This landmark decision did a number of things. Number one is returned the termination of municipal compliance with the constitutional Mount Laurel obligations to the courts. So now, rather than, you know, having this process that towns could go to COA, because COA was the mayor at the time, jurisdiction for compliance was with the courts in the state of New Jersey. It directed the courts to use similar processes that would have been available before COA. Now, this is really a recipe for dysfunction because administrative agencies have planners on staff, and they administrate. Courts don't administrate. Courts adjudicate disputes. Courts don't have planners on staff. Courts hear from experts. It afforded municipalities some protection from builder's remedy actions while the obligations of municipalities were determined, and it permitted developers to file builder's remedy actions if a town was determined to be noncompliant. So in July of 2015, in accordance with this March ruling, over 300 municipalities, including the township of Nutley, filed declaratory judgment actions seeking judicial confirmation of their compliance with Mount Laurel and also seeking protections from the builder's remedy lawsuits. And in fact, as we know, the court granted Nutley immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits while we went through this process of figuring out what Nutley's obligation was only to be. Again, approximately 230 towns have settled with Fair Share Housing and with developers. And so what happened during this process is everybody had experts. Again, because courts adjudicate disputes, and the way courts function is each side has an expert, and the court makes the call on which expert, you know, controls. And so you had Fair Share Housing, who was advocating for more affordable housing units. They employed Dr. David Kinsey as their expert, and municipalities across the state hired a company called E-Consult to be their expert. I will say that Nutley has had a long history of participating in COA's administrative process and also received first and second rounds of county certification from COA. So now, in the litigation, back to litigation, you have these two experts, Dr. Kinsey and E-Consult. Dr. Kinsey had calculated Nutley's obligation to be about 500 affordable housing units. Now, again, this covers the period between 1999 through 2015, which is called the gap period, and then from 2015 through 2025. So during that period of time, Dr. Kinsey said Nutley has an obligation for 500 affordable housing units. Now, remember, that's only 20% of the total number of units that could be imposed upon Nutley. And that means that under Dr. Kinsey's methodology, Nutley could have been exposed to 2,500 multifamily housing units, of which 500 would be low and moderate income housing units. That was the exposure to Nutley. And again, when we're here in 2014 and 2015, and you see what's going on with Roche last prison site at that time, it's these kinds of things that presented extraordinary challenges for the commissioner, and commissioners, and I might add, the professionals. So that was the exposure. Your consultant, E-Consult, who consulted, who represented not only Nutley but all municipalities in the state of the process in the state of New Jersey, they calculated Nutley's obligation to be 164 units. Now, Nutley had about 30 credits from the previous rounds, so say it was 134 units or thereabouts, which still exposed Nutley to about 675 multifamily housing units, of which 134, thereabouts, would be affordable units. So we were trying to figure out, you know, worst-case scenario of 2,500 units, best-case scenario of 675 total units is what we were working with. We were able to reach a settlement that surpassed anything that we had hoped to accomplish, given the policy directive which we were following, which was to absolutely minimize any court-mandated multifamily housing on that. That was the clear policy direction that I received from the commissioner. And I think we accomplished that objective. Under the agreement reached with Fair Share Housing Center, Nutley's obligation will be to adopt a zoning or redevelopment plan on the prison site that would create the opportunity for 55 affordable family rental units. Fifty-five. That is lower than even your own experts' calculation. There is no obligation to zone for affordable housing in any other area in town. All of your affordable housing through 2025, which is the third round, and that's as far out as anybody could see at the moment, will be satisfied on the prison slash Roche property. There will be no mandatory set-aside or overlay zoning requirement anywhere else in town, which is an extraordinary accomplishment, and we believe accomplishes the policy goals commissioners gave to us. This settlement constitutes an 85% reduction from Fair Share's calculation and approximately a 50% reduction from your own experts' calculation. So again, if the policy objective here is, although it requires for us to minimize the requirement of the number of court-mandated multifamily units to be imposed by Nutley, then I feel very complimented to be able to do that, that goal was to the top. At this time, if you have to take any questions back to the board.
First, Mr. Iglesino, I want to compliment you for your representation of the board in this matter, in all matters that you've been handling. And thank you for the update and the civic lesson on Mount Laurel and COA. I thought that was pretty good, and to get us to a point where we're at 55 units rather than 500 units that we were maybe obligated to.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Just, John, I think you've done an outstanding job. This was unbelievable, the whole concept of the Council on Affordable Housing. You know what my opinion of that is, I don't have to go through it again. In some instances, it's similar to terrorism for small, developed suburban towns, but nonetheless, you've done an outstanding job, and I think this is a very fair settlement. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, John, just a point. I don't think anyone truly understands the number of hours of time and effort and negotiation that have gone into achieving this decision, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for hearing our mandate, which was to settle this, get us out of the mainstream on this, don't wait for others to come to some conclusion, because as we know in all the other towns, it's still floating, and there's a lot of, you know, uncertainty around that. But more importantly, the aspect of this settlement, which basically does not obligate the town to have to consider COA in any other part of the town and any future development activities, and I think that's an extraordinary accomplishment, especially when you're aware of the fact that in the state of New Jersey, the shortage in housing, which is forecasted, is not, you know, 10 or 15 units, it's over 170,000 housing units across the state. So that's an extraordinary accomplishment. So thank you for listening to us and for your exceptional work.
Commissioner Petrocco?
Yes, thank you. I just want to point out one very important fact, John, and I think you didn't stress it enough, is that in the beginning of this, you know, we could have had an additional 2,500 apartments in Nutley that would have been mandated, you know, if it was through that 20%, like you said. So, you know, again, you know, I want to commend you on your hard work, you know, to get it to 55 units, I think is, you know, unbelievable, and I know it didn't come easy for you, and I know, you know, what your work ethic is like and what you've done for the township and Nutley, like Moro said, you know, or the mayor, not just on this item, but, you know, everything going through Roche redevelopment, and I know we spent a lot of time together those first few years, and it was stressful, and just to see how the town is shaping up, you know, I know we can't make everybody happy, but I think we're making the majority of the people happy of what's going on on that road site, and, you know, with this COA allocation being at 55, it could have been a lot worse. So I just want to thank you for representing our town so well. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
John, Commissioner Petrocco was truly echoing what I was thinking. 2,500 units would have devastated our school district. 2,500 units would have changed the character of this community forever. So it was an extraordinary challenge. You got it down to 55. The impact would be probably not even felt. Thanks for saving the town. I appreciate it.
Thank you all for your kind words, but I do want to emphasize that, you know, the policy direction and the result was communicated very clearly by all of you to me several times. But the first time that I met with you, it became apparent that you all love this community, you understand what this community is, and that you want to make it better, and you all have a vision on how to do that. And all I was really trying to do was to help you implement your vision. So really, that credit, you know, belongs to you, just here to help you in the best way that I can accomplish the objective that you set. And thank you for the opportunity to represent you and represent this town. It makes me feel good to work with people who are professionals, who are a community, who are in that community.
Thank you, Mr. Iglesino.
And then, by the way, also, thanks to your testimony here, I'm very proud of you, like a really, you know, something to know and respect, and I know I'm a lawyer of the mutual, like, religious society. We cannot talk about, you know, the lawyers who serve nothing well without having, and we're very proud of that in that conversation.
Let's move to bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Bill is for October 16, 2018. Public Affairs, $97,507.46. Revenue and Finance, $3,371,885.72. Public Safety, $271,218.16. Public Works, $452,562.13. Parks and Public Property, $80,979.73. Water Utility, $24,618.6. Total Payroll, $953,124.21, for a grand total of $5,251,895.47.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrocco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only? Seeing none, let's move to Board of Commissioners Announcements. I'm sorry, Mr. Hadding.
This is a couple of questions.
Next to the agenda item, yes.
Congratulations on that couple of obligations, great work by the Council. What is prison getting out of it? It's going to be 55 total units on their property. Are there expected to be any other residential units over there? And if so, how many?
We don't have that number at the present time.
With other will be?
More than likely.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only?
I'm Karen Ellen, I'm a woman, and I just wanted to say, thank you for that wonderful presentation, very thorough and informative. I just have a question about something that you said, is it okay to try and address the attorney about his report?
Through A, yes, go ahead.
So my question was, is the town obligated to provide any further affordable housing outside of the Roche property? Is that correct?
There's no, I'll have Mr. Iglesino correct me, but there's no other further obligation besides those 55 units until 2025?
So my question is, are we allowed, or is the town to put them other places outside of that one facility? So can we spread it out, or is it going to be just congested to one, all affordable housing in one area? housing in one area?
It'll be, go ahead, Mr. Inglisino.
The... It was important to fair share housing, and the reason why is...
It was important to fair share housing, that affordable housing, and to the special master, I might add, that affordable housing be placed on the Roche site and be part of the redevelopment there. And that is one of the ways in which we were able to effectively reduce the number even below that which your consultant, you know, opined to. And so, you know, part of the deal is, is that those fifty-five units will be constructed on the former Roche property. And there is no, at the moment, there is no redevelopment plan beyond, you know, Phase Two A. And while certainly the redeveloper has expressed an interest from the beginning to having some residential there, the fifty-five number was not tied to any agreed-upon, you know, number of residential units from the current owner of the site. That's a separate negotiation.
So I'm guessing the previous question asked, you kind of hear right off, what percentage does that make up of this whole different housing average?
There's no obligation on our part to have that be like twenty percent of the units built on the site.
But is that a percentage of the total?
No.
That's more than...
No, it's not.
So that it could essentially, it could be just fifty-five housing units there complete on the site?
It could be.
But we don't know that.
Correct.
Well, hold on. Mr. Inglisino, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, our only obligation is the fifty-five units on that site.
That's correct. Your only obligation, which is an obligation as part of the settlement agreement, it's not an obligation to Prism. Your only obligation under this agreement is to plan for, which would mean either to zone or to enact a redevelopment plan, which is the functional equivalent of permitting fifty-five affordable housing units on this site. And that is not part and was not negotiated with the developer of Prism. That is an obligation that the municipality is determining to place on Prism. And, you know, whatever Prism seeks to negotiate going forward, it certainly is free to do, but it's not linked to the settlement agreement that is being acted on tonight.
Another question. And is that public housing then? Is that housing that the municipality has to put there or is that private housing that developers will be involved?
So it's not public housing. I knew, I know I threw a lot of information at you and I had to actually really try to think through how much information was too much, but, even for me at times. But the municipality's obligation is to provide a realistic opportunity for the affordable housing to be built, which generally means that the obligation for the town is to zone for it to be built. The town has no obligation to build it. The housing will not be public housing that you might think of, you know, a town or a housing agency building, you know, it's not that way. It is to provide a reasonable opportunity for the housing to be built. And typically, you know, these are built, you know, by developers and they have to follow the requirements that are set forth in the Coa regulations. Because although Coa was disbanded, and this is where we really get to the AP class on Coa, there are certain regulations of Coa that have survived and that govern affordable housing going forward.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move to Commissioner announcements. Commissioners, any announcements?
I actually have one today. I'd just like to say that I was invited to the Nutley Lacrosse Team's annual fishing trip. And I have to tell you, I never caught so many porgies in my life. I never baited so many hooks for kids in my life, but I have to tell you, it was an excellent trip and, you know, everybody that ran it, from the coaches, and there was a lot of Nutley people there. It really is the spirit of Nutley, you know, what we do here and how people get involved and how people come out. It was a bunch of fresh new faces for me, not having, you know, my son in lacrosse, my youngest one anyway. You know, there's a whole new, whole new people here, you know, that are moving from other towns. And it was just really nice to shake their hands and they have actually had a lot of good things to say about the town, which was refreshing as well. So here's to Nutley Lacrosse.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Orders introduction. Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes. Before I introduce this ordinance for introduction, this is our parking ordinance. So I'd just like, I ask the chief to come up and to say a few words of what he's been dealing with at the police department the last couple of years, with things that affect this ordinance.
Through some of the complaints we were receiving regarding some of the streets in the ordinance, I feel, and it's in Oakley, Paris, and Conduit, for adjusting the parking permit to allow parking permits to exempt them from just a two-hour limit. Eight A to six P M is our standard, two-hour limit in all zones. So this will just allow residents on those streets to apply and have a sticker just to exempt them from the two-hour limit. So the parking street will wait two hours. And that seems like that would be a lot of concern, some of the people parking in the areas and neighborhoods. So I think that will require six months of evaluating and any adjustments that we may make about that time.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
Chief, I'm going to take this opportunity. I want to thank you and the police department for the extraordinary work that you've been doing. I've been reading a lot about some of these burglaries, these car burglaries, but I'll tell you what, Commissioner, when you read the end of the story and that the Nutley police apprehended these thugs, I've got to tell you, it makes you feel safe. Commissioner, thank you. The chief, thank you.
Appreciate the support. Thanks again.
Commissioner?
Okay. This is ordinance number three, four, zero, zero, and ordinance to amend the ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter two, two, eight, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article two, Parking on Certain Streets, Section eleven, titled Parking Time Limited, and Section thirty-two, entitled Parking Permit. I don't have my little, I'm saying in here. Got one? Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I move that this ordinance be passed through its second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law on the further consideration of said ordinance. For final passes by the Board of Commissioners, be held at its second reading, I believe it's November...
November twentieth.
When is it?
November twentieth.
November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. I move the ordinance.
Aye, second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Let's move to public hearings. Commissioner Petrakko?
Okay, this is on the Lo Sap, ordinance number three, three, nine, eight. Ordinance amend and ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter ninety-six, entitled Lent of Service Awards. I move that. We open the public portion of the meeting.
Second. Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number three, three, nine, eight? Seeing none? I move the close.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Just before I vote, I'd just like to thank everyone that had something to do with this ordinance. I know Sam Correll's here, Fire Chief Nicoletti, or Deputy Chief Paul Cofone, all the members of the volunteers. This has been a work probably in process since the, since I've got on this board with all these volunteers. So I just want to thank the board of Commissioners and the mayor for your support. I'd like to thank all the volunteers for their patience and I really think that it's been a long time coming, so I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. I know we had scheduled the public hearing on the density ordinance.
We had all the ordinance.
Oh, sorry. Move the ordinance?
I thought I did, I'm sorry.
Close the public hearing.
I did that, where I moved the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
I just want to comment. On introduction, I incorrectly voted no. I just wanted to say I wholeheartedly vote yes on this ordinance.
Commissioner Petrakko?
I didn't know, Commissioner Evans, what this meant. Now I do. That means move the ordinance. Okay, I got you. I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Go back to what I was saying. A long-awaited density ordinance we had scheduled for a public hearing tonight, the Commissioners are still working through the details of the ordinance with a lot more questions that have come up over the last two weeks. We're going to ask all the Commissioners to filter their comments through Mr. Jenna Tempo. And then we're going to have our two planners come in and help us work through so we can finally get this ordinance passed and, you know, put some teeth in our density on mixed use. So we're just moving forward on that and it's a longer process than anybody anticipated. Let's move to resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I have a resolution before I present it. It deals with polio. Normally, I don't read resolutions, but I'm going to read this one. I remember as a kid growing up in Brooklyn, we had a relative who used to limp around and I remember asking my mother, what happened to, his name, he was junior, he was a cousin. And I remember my mother telling me that he was afflicted with polio before the, there was enough vaccinations that came out. And, you know, I listened, as you do, to the news and we just, you know, inundated with so many things in life, but you know what really counts? Our health and the fact that we are in a position, whether we're in government or private industry, to do something about it. And I'm going to read something to you tonight where you're going to hear some extraordinary developments regarding polio. Whereas polio mainly affects children under the age of five, do you imagine that, under the age of five? And whereas there is no cure for polio, but it is preventable with a vaccine, and whereas polio cases have dropped by ninety-nine point nine percent since nineteen eighty-eight, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease. And boy, would it be great to see that eradicated in our lifetime. And whereas if polio is not eradicated within ten years, as many as two hundred thousand children could be paralyzed by it each year, a polio-free world will be a safer world for children everywhere. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognize October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen as World Polio Day. Now here's the neat part of this. And commends the global network of the Rotary Organization, including the Nutley Rotary Club. Commissioner Petrakko, you talked about some of the extraordinary things our township does. Well, boy, I'll tell you, if you ever want to see a club, and all of them are great clubs, but I know the Rotary Club is really outstanding. The Nutley Rotary Club and their efforts to build awareness, fundraise, and encourage governments to donate to and support polio eradication efforts around the world, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four, eight, twenty, dash, five. And whereas the RFQs for Township Forester were received and opened on Wednesday, October eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas the most responsible and responsive request for qualifications was from the Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linson, P.O., Box sixty-eighty-nine, West Orange, New Jersey. And whereas the Shade Tree Department LLC has provided these services in the past to the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued services. And whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on October one, two thousand and eighteen, and continued through September thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas the contract is not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars and funds are available from account eight, zero, one, five, twelve, two hundred, in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and five dollars, and account nine, zero, one, five, twelve, two hundred, in the amount of sixteen thousand, four ninety-five. Funds have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to the Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linson, as described herein, and that the response to the request for qualification be placed on file with this resolution. And a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with local public contracts as well. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Whereas the Code Enforcement Department received a zoning permit fee in the amount of seventy-five dollars from Sheldon and Glory Needen for the property located one ninety-seven and Winkle Avenue, whereas Sheldon and Glory are not moving forward with the sale of their home, whereas the zoning official has determined that the fee of seventy-five dollars shall be refunded. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer is authorized to refund the zoning permit fee in the amount of seventy-five dollars. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund overpayments of water charges in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-eight cents for Block ninety-three oh two, Lot ten. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, this is ordinance number two, three, two, dash, eighteen. This to save a little time. I'll read it, I'll read it by number. This is for bulletproof vests, is in the budget insertion of five thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Anthony Barino, an employee in the Department of Public Safety, be granted a medical leave of absence without pay effective September fifteenth through December fifth, two thousand and eighteen. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas bids for Narren Place roadway improvement project were received and opened on Wednesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas H A M Contractors, three hundred color road, Clifton, New Jersey, was a low bidder. Whereas the base bid for Narren Place roadway improvement project is in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, for a total bid amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. And whereas funds are available from account number G oh four, one oh four, four oh one, ordinance number three, three, four, five, A, in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to H A M Contractors, not to exceed one hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas raffle applications are perceived from the following organizations. Rotary Club of Nutley, license number thirty-five, eighteen, off-premise merchandise raffle to be held Saturday, December first, two thousand and eighteen. H S A Fairview of Bloomfield, license number thirty-six, eighteen, on-premise merchandise raffle. HSA Fairview of Bloomfield, license number 3618, on-premise merchandise raffle, and license number 3718, on-premise 50/50 cash raffle to be held November 30th, 2018. Good Shepherd Academy, license number 3818, on-premise merchandise raffle, and license number 3918, on-premise 50/50 cash raffle to be held on Sunday, November 18th, 2018. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk in the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and a municipal clerk is hereby authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. This is Resolution 23818. I'm going to shorten this a little bit. Whereas over the past decade, the New Jersey Council on Affordable Housing has failed to adopt constitutionally compliant third-round rules that have withstood the judicial scrutiny. And whereas the parties have agreed to enter into a written settlement agreement to memorialize the terms and conditions of settlement, as well as the respective obligations of the parties. Whereas the Board of Commissioner finds that it is prudent to enter into a settlement agreement with FSHC to avoid the time and expense of continued litigation, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that one, the aforementioned recitals are hereby adopted and incorporated herein as if repeated in full. And whereas the mayor is hereby authorized to execute, and the township clerk being is hereby authorized to witness a settlement agreement resolving the township's DJ action in a form and content acceptable to council for the township, and where, and that the township administration, planner and council for the township, be and are hereby authorized to undertake all reasonable and necessary steps to effectuate the foregoing, and that this resolution takes effect immediately. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Before I vote, I'm going to expand a little bit of what Commissioner Tucci said regarding Coach. Since the 1970s, our township and municipalities across this state have been victimized by judicial overreach. It is sickening to me that the courts have the power to determine the destiny of any community in this state. And I've looked into this for quite some time, and I've been told there's absolutely nothing we can do about it. I'm sure if it was up to our municipality, as well as others, we would just say, hey, you know, we'll determine what is right for our community. I hope down the road, some of the citizens here, and maybe some of them listening, will take some action with regard to our state legislature that puts heavy burdens on municipalities like ours. Judicial overreach, folks, is not good for anybody. But saying that, I'm glad that we had a Board of Commissioners and an attorney, and our town attorney, Mr. Jenna Tempo, who are really on top of this, and minimized the real negative impact that this could have had on us. But I would just hope you remember those two words, judicial overreach. This is not the end. This is going to go on and on for a long time. But I vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Yes. Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. Good evening. As one of the founders for the Nutley Coalition for Change, I just want to inform you, we continue to receive signatures for the petition for term limits on the quasi-judicial boards, including Planning Board, Zoning Board, Rent Leveling Board, and Library Board. I know I've been asking each of you where your stances on term limits for these boards, and I just want to remind you, campaign season is around the corner, and the citizens of Nutley are watching for each of your responses. So I'd like to revisit this one more time tonight and ask each of you where your stances on term limits for these boards, starting with Commissioner Rogers.
Mr. Rossi, we're going to have you, you can make your public comment, and then the commissioners will respond to you at a later time, okay?
Okay.
So continue your comments.
Okay. Well then, my next question would be, Mayor Scarpelli, at the last meeting, you said you would be open to receiving applicants to fill the opening positions. So from what I can see, the Planning Board has four positions opening up in December, the Library Board has one, the Rent Leveling Board has two positions, the Shade Tree Commission has six, and the Board of Adjustments have five positions. So Mayor Scarpelli, will you announce these positions on each of these boards on the Nutley Town email notification system, as well as a town cable channel?
Continue, Ms. Rossi.
Okay, and then my last question is for Mr. Jenna Tempo. What is the status of the employee handbook, and will there be an anti-nepotism policy included in the employee handbook?
Thank you, Ms. Rossi. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Neil Henning, 31 Terrace Avenue. The, besides the Saul upholstery, are there any other tenants in the Davis Building at this time?
Excuse me, Mr. Henning, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. Besides the Saul upholstery, are there any other tenants in the Davis Building at this time?
Continue, Ms. Tucci.
If so, what is the rent? Has the town tried to rent any portion of that building? And what are the plans for that building now? So we're just going to run through all the questions and then answer.
Correct.
Has Chickalini property been subdivided yet? Now we are two years owning that property. My understanding is that we were going to subdivide it and sell it off. What is the plan for that property now? Can you tell me if each of the commissioners is endorsing this school referendum in November? I'd like to hear from each one if they are endorsing it and throwing their full weight behind getting that passed. And are there heavy commercial vehicles allowed to be, use municipal parking, rent, basically rent municipal parking on a monthly basis? And if so, what is the process for that, and what is the rent? And lastly, I'd like to know if there's any ongoing FBI investigations currently being done on any of the municipal government agencies in town. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, could I have a motion to close the public comment?
I make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Commissioners wish to address any of the comments this evening?
I'll address the one on the Davis Building. The only tenant left in the Davis Building is Saul's, the upholstery company there. And you asked about our plans moving forward, as I'm sure you're aware, Neil. We originally purchased that building on behalf of the Board of Education in light of the referendum and the needed expansion in the middle school. And it is our intention, and I think Commissioner wants to correct me, to sell that property to the Board of Education, so that if and when they pass a referendum that is acceptable to the citizens of the township, that they'll have the property available to expand.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to address any of the comments made tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, since I was asked the question, and I'll answer it, about term limits. Look, it's public knowledge, I am fully, fully in favor of term limits for boards. Ms. Rossi, since the last meeting, I did some research, and to my surprise, there are many, many, many municipalities across this country that have passed resolutions that would impose term limits on volunteer boards. And the preamble to most of these resolutions was to increase participation, to increase public engagement. I think it's a healthy thing. So here's what I'm doing. I'm putting together some framework for a resolution with the idea of addressing some of the concerns that my colleagues had, and their legitimate concerns about people who have been on boards and who have a lot of corporate knowledge over a period of time, but also in the event that there are not people stepping up to volunteer. It's a good safety gap to make sure that the boards are continuing their work seamlessly. But I'm putting together a framework, and I'm going to sit down with each of my commissioners and discuss it, but I will, without any doubt, the second meeting of November introduce that resolution. But I would ask, and I think this is important, that whether there's yea or nays, that everyone's opinion is respected. Just because I'm for it, it may mean that another commissioner's not for it, for very legitimate reasons. But this is what democracy's about, to have a civil constructive discussion publicly about very critical issues like this. So my answer directly is yes, I gave you a timetable, I'm committed to that. Look, this is nothing new, I've been all over the darn country, on every TV station talking about this issue. Well, I think I'm obligated to at least address it here at home. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you. As far as the term limits, you know, I've been looking into that, and I've had many conversations with Commissioner Rogers about it also. I just want to reflect back to when I was the mayor. I can remember I was in a really difficult situation. You know, there was someone I went to Nutley High School with, and their father was on the, one of the boards. And he was getting older and not as interested in it as I thought at the time, but a great guy, great family, all that stuff. And it was very difficult for me to make that phone call to him and let him know that I wasn't going to reappoint him again. And, you know, to my surprise, the guy thanked me. And he came to the commission meeting and thanked me too, because he really did have enough. And his son called me and thanked me, and I was shocked, you know? And it was kind of like a phone call where he said to me, I never thought you were going to ask for me, you know, to go. And he did have enough. So I think that, I'll wait for the resolution, Steve, you know, for you to present us with the resolution, and I'll review that. But I am leaning towards, you know, that there should be something in place, that, you know, people do get tired of it, they're not as fresh as they were. And it's very difficult for, you know, a mayor, you know, when I was sitting in that seat, I actually took people off the boards too, or didn't take, I never took anybody off, but I did not reappoint some people. And it's, it's a very tough situation to be in as the mayor, and I have to tell you, that's one of the situations I don't miss at all, you know, to be perfectly honest with you. But I think that in the future, I think, Tammy, the world is changing, and I think that, you know, Nutley has to change a little bit as well. Thank you.
Mayor, can I also comment on that? Tammy, when you asked this question last time, you know I was torn about this, all right? Because there's some folks, as some of the others already said, who've gotten tired and maybe not as interested, but still care about the town and love the town, all right? And there are those that are up and coming, that want to get involved and want to participate. Well, I do need to tell you that after having several conversations with Commissioner Rogers about the broad framework of what he's proposing, I am absolutely open to the idea. It's not a commitment yet, but I am absolutely open to listening and to seeing exactly how that shakes out. And let's all just keep in mind that it's not like we have thousands of people beating down the doors to serve on some of these boards, which takes a lot of time and a lot of energy. Thank you.
In regards to the appointments, I welcome anybody's resume. I actually got one this past week. So I welcome anybody's resume that's willing to serve on any of the boards. As people's appointments come up, we'll consider them and their service. And I think as the appointing authority, that's your decision to be made. If someone is getting tired, they need to be replaced, that's fine. You have to make that decision. That's what the appointing authority is there for. And any new people that are out there, want to serve, we certainly welcome their resumes to be considered.
Mayor, the only other comment that I will add is that, Tammy, and as you heard me say last time, I truly believe that people who serve on these boards, by and large, are very dedicated, right? You saw us tonight honoring Barry Kazirah for his service. And when you think about his role, and what he does, and the passion that he brings to that board each time, and the colleagues that I sit with, right? There's much that I think that's valuable about the process. I think we need to actually learn more about the selection process, what that would be. I agree that the measure should be one's willingness to commit, to do the job the way the job is meant to be done. And so when you think about the corporate capital, the training that they have to go through, just the experience that you have to go through, and getting used to the idea that on these boards, the zoning board especially, and the planning board, that they're quasi-judicial boards. You sit there as a judge. You have to listen to testimony, not the emotion of what you think, not the emotion of what you think other people think you should do, but to sit there with the strength and the fortitude to listen to objective testimony of what's in front of you. And then to propose, it says, look, if we're approving something we don't like, make recommendations to understand how, for example, our rules should evolve, because things are changing. So I'm very interested, I didn't know about Commissioner Rogers' position of putting together a resolution. I'm very interested, Steve, in learning more about that.
Nobody knew except until tonight. So I hear you.
Just that idea. And the other thing is that I've watched the mayor, the president mayor's struggle, and the former mayor's struggle to search for qualified candidates, people with a desire. So one of the aspects that you have talked about is, is there a process that could be in place, that if people are interested, they can submit an application, and that they can go be screened? To me, that would be a huge step forward. So even if we were just able to accomplish two things, make sure that the people who are serving are passionate about doing their job to the best that they can do, and two, have a ready list of candidates that are available and willing to do that, and are willing to make the commitment, true, the true commitment, you know, that would be a giant step forward in and of itself. But I will reserve to see what Commissioner Rogers crafts.
Anybody else want to address anything else tonight?
Hi, Mayor.
The heavy equipment on township-owned parking lots. The only heavy, Mr. Henning, the only heavy equipment that is being rented currently is on the Chickalini property, because they were there previous, and we honored the commitment that Mr. Chickalini made to them. Other than that, there's no other heavy equipment, and I believe they're paying $100 a month. Jenna Tempo, you want to comment if there's any FBI investigation into any of the departments in Township of Nutley?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as far as I am aware, there are no FBI investigations involving any aspects of the township. I believe I would be made aware, but I am not aware of any such investigations.
And the, how about on the subdivision of Chickalini?
Yes, Mayor, one of the reasons why that hasn't been addressed is because we needed to know what our COA obligation might be and where we would have to resolve it. Now that that's getting cleared up, I anticipate that we can move forward as soon as that is approved and start to take action with regard to Chickalini's.
Any other comments, commissioners?
Mayor, just one comment in response to Tammy's question. I wish I could say that I have it done, but I don't. I'm working on it, it's right here, it's this thick, I'm really working at it, but it's just taking me more time. And I, the commissioners will determine if there's going to be a nepotism policy, but there is currently going to be one, some type of form of one. I don't know what it's going to finally look like, but they have to make that determination.
Mayor, just as a point of reference, and Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, but concerning any nepotism policies and/or ethics policies that are not addressed presently, I believe we revert to what the state policies.
Yes, we are always subject to the state policies on that.
So it's not that we're without policies, it's just that we may be sharing the state's policy.
And as to the ethics, the handbook will basically say we are subject to the state ethics policy, for the most part.
Great, thank you.
If nothing else, commissioners, for a motion to adjourn.
Motion is adjourned.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.